Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Tonight's regularly scheduled February 24, 2015, 7:30 Tuesday night Selectman's meeting. Before I start, I just want to remind our audience that we are being recorded today by our local access. And if I could ask everybody to join us in the stand and the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe Troy's up to power tonight, if he's coming on or not. So we'll proceed on that assumption.
Troy's a little into the weather. Okay, so were you able to look at the minutes for the regular session for November 25th, executive session for January 13th, and executive session for February 10?
I am good.
Okay, I will move those.
The second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to affirm the following for approval of the warrant, commitments and bills, under warrant number 69 for $50,486.42. Ambulance commitment number 1B for $14,958.78. Ambulance commitment number 2A for $18,571.22. And Hartford, Selectman Bill to the Hartford for 111F policy renewal for fire police for
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve payment of the following warrants and bills. Payroll warrant number 70 for $380,411.32. Mender warrant number 71 for $233,704.8. And withholding warrant number 72 for $138,281.64.
And a second abstain from the police payroll warrant 70. How does that work now if we don't have a second on that?
We'll have to.
You'll have to reaffirm that.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
Because the officers need to be paid one way, the other you will value your signatures. So we'll do that as you suggest.
Just affirm that payroll warrant 70, police payroll, next meeting.
I move.
Other than that, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the payment for the following Selectman Bills dated November 24, 2015. Borg Insurance for $109,827. Express Newspaper for legal notice for $70. Harry Harding &amp; Sons for $438. Aqui- Aquia-
Aquatic?
I'm sorry. Aquatic Control Technology, which is West Monfils Pond, for $10,818.
Is it on when it's forward?
Yep. And Cushman Insurance Group for $56,347.
Is it on when it's forward?
Yes.
Okay. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I acknowledge the following Selectman's office payroll for the week ended 2/21/2015 for $6,229.64. It's been a while since I've done that. I also acknowledge the following turnovers. Turnover number 2015-58 for $1,0275. Number 59 for $29,272.92. And number 60 for $2.80. And that's all I have.
Very good. We have scheduled appointments. I guess Chair needs to sign technical review assistance.
Yes. This is to do with the Blackledge Farms Chapter 4B project. The, as part of that.
Some of the monies.
We can get assistance from the state for review services, for someone who worked with the zoning board of the hills. The zoning board of the hills.
If not in their application field.
I think so.
Yeah. That's the way it did last time. Why don't they have the same lead?
I just have to find it. I'll continue looking for it while you're talking.
We're gonna have wage and personnel come in incident?
Yes, with the water department.
Okay. So that'll be our next appointment at 7:45. I didn't ask if you wanted to add anything to the agenda.
I did.
You all set?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, no.
All right, Troy. Are we bolt off or what?
I am really off.
Charlie.
Yes, sir.
If you'd like, you'd like to go through some of the mail?
Sure. We have a pothole claim from Charlene St. Croix that had been processed by our insurer. The insurer denied it on several things. One was that we weren't promptly notified about the incident. And second is that on pothole claims, the state statute is we need to be notified about the pothole before an accident happens. I understand that's a burden on motorists, but unlike, for instance, possibly a situation with ice on our Rock, the normal town property, we have to be notified about a pothole. If we then don't take action to reduce the hazard, then we aren't liable for those accidents.
So what happens in this case?
She could come back to the board some future day and say, well, I know this insurer won't pay for it, but will you? And I don't know whether, you know, we'll see if something comes in.
So if somebody hits a pothole, bangs a rim, notifies the higher air, whoever's that there's a pothole there.
They don't fill it. And a second person hits it.
Then, right, that's when, well, you know, that could happen. You can get five of those in the same night. As long as the first one.
Right.
And they don't get out and fix it.
Well, I think there's also a reasonable standard in, if someone hit, I mean, I've encountered situations where several people have hit the same obstruction or pothole or something within minutes, and there's no time to get somebody out there to react to it.
But if we do get a report, draw out market, barrel it, flag it, something.
Yeah.
We're liable to make sure we at least get that done.
Right.
No matter whether it's Sunday night.
Correct.
Two in the morning. Okay.
Ambulance payment for January $8,531.6.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm still waiting to hear, oh, this is in this order, but I was waiting to hear on Lindy's general store on the second meeting, and I'm still waiting to hear on those trash bags.
They had electrical fire the other day. Heard on the scanner. Okay. I don't know. Having issues.
I'm gonna hear back from the recycling court area. Non-binding referendum. I had not known that this was a possibility, but John Chivon had come in. He knew that he had seen this on state elections, where there are non-binding referendums, in essence, directions to state legislators to support or oppose various legislation. I didn't realize there was, and he didn't know about this either. He was just trying to find a way of doing this. But there are several different ways where you can have a non-binding referendum on the town election ballot. The board itself, on its own, could decide, no, we want to get a sense of the town on a certain question. We'll put a non-binding referendum on there. You can have a petition from 10 residents come in and say, board, would you put this on? And the board could do that. The folks could all, if the board said no, then there were a couple of other alternatives. One is that they petition town meeting, and they put an article on town meeting saying, shall the town put this question on the next town election ballot? Again, it's a non-binding referendum.
May I back you up for a second, Charlie? You said 10 residents. I thought it was 10%.
I'm getting to that.
Oh, okay.
Those are your two. If the board had said no.
To get to us to act.
Then, then you have the two options. They can go to town meeting and try and get the ballot, push on the ballot. Or, as you just mentioned, get the 10% of the registered voters, which it's a considerable, that's a large amount.
Yeah, 150.
Yeah. So, well, it's 500.
Oh.
You don't include the kids. So roughly 500, it would take. But it would be a lot more work, far more, you know, you only need 200 to force a town meeting, for instance, but you need 500 to do this. So I've given John all that information. There are various dates attached to all that. I don't know if he or people who were asking him about it are going to do anything. We'll see what happens.
I saw him. He had come in earlier to, he was looking for something. And I asked him about it. And I said, you know, I understand there's been a lot of discussion on the common core issue, but my hope is that we would have a forum that would provide information. I've been through one that's opposing common core, but it would be nice to have a balance of that. Anyway, okay.
I thought it was on the right to farm.
No.
No, that's totally different. There's a, you actually have petition articles, articles for town meeting.
Yeah.
Where John was coming in about possibly putting a non-binding referendum on about common core.
Oh, so that was discussion, not what we got? As far as we got a petition?
You got petitions to do with right to farm, which will be, will be turned into articles for town meeting.
So that one's a conversation about thoughts of?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I'm gonna suggest when we get to that discussion about the farm issue is that you all may want to have some sort of public forum, hearing, whatever, because I think, we'll get into that.
Okay.
Are you on that subject right now?
No, not yet.
On the, right, not the right to farm, but the?
Just the non-binding referendum.
And to get a feel from the town about how they feel about the common core.
Correct. I don't know what the wording of the question would be or anything like that, so, because when you say someone, do you support or oppose? Well, then you gotta define what's common core, for instance. And I don't know if that's gonna be the same across.
Right. So where did you hear your?
John, hi. John Chivon had come in here looking for a dick like.
No, I mean, where did you hear your seminar on that?
Oh, I don't know if it was last year? I think it was last spring. I want to say it was last spring, somewhere. Schmeling, who was on the finance committee at the time and is now on the school committee, put together a forum on common core. And it was really people who didn't support common core. So I sat through that particular seminar. And then I heard that the Department of Education was going to Rich Water College to present to people who sit on school committees, you know, about common core. So I asked if I could go along. So I actually listened through. It was just the only people that showed up were people from Halifax. So we sat in a circle, and I asked all the questions that had come up at this forum. And it was interesting, and it really sort of eased my mind on certain aspects of it. But I think it's good for both sides to be heard. And I know we have no control over that. We can certainly make it a referendum, but, you know, I would just encourage that, you know, if there was a way that we could put together a forum that would also support the idea of common core, and, you know, as.
And one that opposes.
And one that opposes it. So that our taxpayers can make an informed decision, because right now, the only thing that has been provided is information on people who don't feel that it's a good thing for our town.
And that's, that's just to get it talked about. The meeting is a non-binding, just to get a feel from the town anyways.
Yeah.
We're not voting for or against it.
No, what would happen is, it's a non-binding question, so it might say, do the residents of Halifax support common core?
So.
It would be yes or no. And the school committee is the, is the only body that actually adopts the curriculum with the superintendent's recommendation. So it wouldn't be binding that they would have to listen to town meeting. It was just sort of.
That they would get a flavor of.
But, yes.
But you have to have people voting that understand both sides, as much as can be understood.
That's what my point is.
Right.
Because I think a lot of towns have actually had the same non-binding question on their ballots. I think there's one or two that have actually done it. And, yeah.
So I mean, you know, it's almost like two things. You have, you know, one meeting for, one meeting against, maybe a debate between the two to try to.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that everybody's.
See where they come. Is that something, if, if this comes to fruition, fruition.
There's nothing preventing the board from putting stuff like that together.
Yeah, we could work with the school committee.
Which would end up being you doing it.
You know, we could work with it. It's really a school committee issue, so we could really work with the school committee.
But if they're not interested, I'm not saying they are or are not interested, but if.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy to help.
But, I mean, if, if we're gonna get it on the ballot, we want to.
Well, right now, I'm just.
As soon as possible to get something going.
Right, but I'll wait to see if something actually comes in.
Yeah, it's just a conversation right now.
And what's the deadline for that?
Well, the, if he'd want, if the board, I mean, how I'll put this, the board could tonight or some other night, right now, still put something on by itself. If you're waiting for 10 signatures, then I believe it's gonna be, I'd have to go back and look again.
I would want to talk to John Chivon, I think, before I.
Just wanted to ask what the deadline you think is to get it, next meeting?
Well, the practical deadline for right now, if you said no, they don't have time to get the 500 signatures. I don't mean that logistically. I mean literally by law, they would have had to have gotten the 10 signature petition in by a week and a half ago.
Oh, wow.
And this is just Courtney Andrews, and I'm just telling them why the camera's not there.
Oh.
At the school, so, sorry. No, and I'm gonna get a text from the chair of the school committee, because she's gonna let me know when they go into a different session, so.
They're gonna run over there for?
If the timing is right, I will. If not, then I won't. Yeah. Those are your by yourself.
They, but they have, basically until the warrant goes to press, you could accept the petition and say, yeah, we're gonna put it on the ballot.
Right, okay.
So they've got weeks.
Oh, okay. Okay, so for them to get it, to force it, they're out of time for.
If you want to put it on with 10 signatures, you could do that.
Right. Because the school committee, you're gonna be looking at this maybe next year?
They have to vote, okay, so the Department of Education is supposed to officially vote at this coming fall, because it's really their decision, and then we really do.
But I mean, I mean, even though they're, I mean, but even though they're, they're elected, if the people that voted and win don't understand, how can they relay that to, you know, their committee members, who they've elected?
It's a little complicated.
And it's a very trick, it's a very complicated, you know, it's complicated.
It's complicated because there's been quite debate about whether or not the school committee has to adopt it if the state adopts it. On one side of the argument is, if you do not adopt and teach common core, then you will not qualify for Chapter 70.
Yes, though.
You know, so it's, it's a little complicated. So I think we'll have plenty of time to talk about that for the forms. And that's my, that's why my thought is that would be the best.
Yeah, I think so too. I mean, from what I heard, I heard some stuff that I don't like outweighing right now more the, of the stuff that they say will do.
Yeah.
But yet, I haven't seen it or shown it, so.
You all have a 7:45.
All right. We all have a seven, we all have a 7:45.
You all do.
With Water Department, Wage and Personnel, Joint Meeting with the Board of Selectmen, Hawaii. Found some seats back there. I'm glad you were able to do that.
Have you seen any clue of our friends?
I'm representing wage and personnel.
Okay. Do we really need a single vote from wage and personnel?
Yeah. Second and the one from the Water Department, which Keith is representing.
I know I seen him somewhere.
Yeah.
I thought it was a snowman at a snowbank, but I guess, you know, it wasn't.
So we'll start from the, so, come on up.
Okay. I won't fight. I don't know about the rest of them, but I know I won't.
And Keith, you might just start off from the beginning, like they don't know, I mean, they do know everything, obviously, they have the.
Okay. What we're here for is an incentive pay increase for water department employees. And evidently, we're supposed to get approval for this before we sent them to school to get the license that he has. And we did, because we don't deal with that very often. I think the last time it was done was when I did it back in, maybe '95.
Yes.
Previous millennium.
Yeah, so it was a while ago.
I remember.
So that's where we stand. We're doing it backwards, if I want to say.
So the gentleman's name is?
Paul Gujalo.
And licenses that he has obtained are?
A Class 2 drinking license, treatment and distribution.
So there are two licenses. And you're asking for a 1% incentive increase for any choices?
No, Charlie, it's $2,000 a year slash 96 cents on alcohol.
Okay. Is that the breakdown on 1% or is that?
No, 1% is to do with other, other licenses that we, that we can get, but we don't want to deal with that right now.
Okay. All right. Because that's where we have.
Because the original letter that we received said 1% for each of the licenses.
Does Sandy, she's, looks like she knows.
Oh, I get it. They did some research into a challenge, and the licenses that we received, once they qualified for the $2,000. The other, the 1% are different classes.
Okay. So we're here asking for the what?
It's just the $2,000.
For the $2,000 slash 96 cents on alcohol.
So that's total?
We advertised his job as a requirement to have the Class 2 licenses. He didn't have them when he came here. He had one of them. He had a Class 1 treatment license.
Okay.
So he worked his butt off and went to school quickly, passed both the exams, the distribution exam and the treatment exam, under the Class 2.
Okay.
So he's met his requirements.
No, I understand that, but I'm having a memory from years ago. So it's a requirement of the job, therefore it's a.
Wait, the Water Department made it a requirement.
Okay, okay, but it's not in the job description?
It is.
But this is a contract employee? Okay, you know, I'm only questioning it because.
No, they do have an employee who, one of your employees does not have that, that license. So it's not like he couldn't have been hired without the thing they wanted him to get.
No, that's not what I'm questioning. The thing that I'm questioning is, years and years ago, when I was on the Wage and Personnel Board, we were brought this particular license.
For the superintendent.
Okay, that's the difference.
Right.
Thank you.
So Keith, even though he has those, doesn't receive that bonus.
Right, thank you. All right, that's, I remember the issue. Yeah. Okay, so now I understand what it is.
So that's like a stipend?
Would you want to call it that?
I'm, I'm gonna call it a stipend. I think that would be.
It doesn't mention, call it that here, but.
Yeah. I would refer to it.
Because you have certain.
Did you have that, like, right here?
That's right. I don't, Charlie, we didn't, because we didn't get, we got the written letter with 1%. That's what they have. Okay, so.
Wage and Personnel supports the request.
Yes.
Okay. So as Chair, I guess.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, we need all, all the board or just?
One vote from each of you. So the two of you say to the Chair, yes, Chair, please vote on behalf of the board, vote yes.
I have to talk to Troy.
You should literally talk it to the Chair.
So what I would recommend is that Kim move to the board's Selectman Support.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we support the $2,000 annual stipend for the Water Department employee, Paul.
Gujalo.
Gujalo.
Troy, want to talk about, yeah, what we've talked about? And then you recommend?
They're saying, each of them are saying yes also. But you need, but the board needs a vote to say yes, and then you're voting on behalf of the board.
Yes, you made a motion, and I second. So any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a vote from them, a vote from you, and a vote from you. And we'll record that and send that information to first in the.
To Sandy. Perfect.
And just to make sure people understand, this is not, do not increase in the Water Department budget or anything because of that. It's worth it, this money's already available in the Water Department budget.
Yes, it is. It is, yeah.
Okay. Tough one.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Bye, lovely lady.
Bye.
Eight o'clock, might not have.
We will not have the card clock coming.
Oh, okay.
We won't? No, we will not.
All right.
They are still slated to come in at 8:15.
Do I have to sign this?
It looks like you do. It did pay $875. Remember that was in front of.
Yeah, we didn't see, yeah, what is that? That's how we saw it.
Yeah, that was a little weird.
Yeah, I was asking, I just looked it over and I saw that it, that's why.
The title wages.
It just doesn't, it's not in the usual format.
Oh, this is the title one. Yeah, no, this is the title one, so it has its own, yeah. There you go.
Would the board like me to continue?
Yes, please.
Oh, right.
Okay, so we had a claim put in by Frances Healy at, where she slipped and fallled at 452 Twin Lakes Drive. Her attorney indicated that the town is responsible for the area. I notified our insurer, I notified our attorney that we have absolutely no jurisdiction whatsoever. It's a condo property. It's not plowed, it's not maintained. We don't do anything up there whatsoever. So, I mean, the claim's been passed along to our insurer, but our insurer realizes that they should be paying a claim for that. It's, I've told the attorney that too.
Yeah.
No action needed, but I want the board to be aware of that. On the Franklin Street properties, the ones at Franklin Hayward, which the town meeting declined to purchase last week, I need the board to formally decline the option to purchase.
I'll make that motion.
To decline the purchase of the few lots that were under 61 April, the town vote.
Yes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The police chief is asking that Officer Herbert Rollshaw be placed on 111F status from February 18th to February 23rd due to an injury which occurred on duty. It's for medical bills and wages for four days.
So move.
Is he back? Okay.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Is he okay? Awesome.
On the Mass Teachers Association.
Are you okay? Are you okay?
We'll put the chairs out, maybe you're over.
Now, did you really hurt yourself?
I put a claim in right away.
Were you putting out the, the space savers out there? I don't know where you'd put them in urinal.
You can't moon at tears, it's really hard to, to get them.
To get them passed through town meeting, yeah. We went through to get these, or one of those. Everybody bothers these.
Uh, Mass Teachers Association asked for a bundle of information, I'm sure relating to contract negotiations and sending myself a pretty good package together.
To what, to what?
Mass Teachers, Mass Teachers Association is asking for a bundle of budget information.
You haven't done that yet?
Still working on it.
Wow.
Um, okay, right to farm, stable permits, you name the subjects, so what, we're, you have a bunch of information. One is you have a letter that we were CC'd on, from, to, sent to the board of health by a group of residents, asking that the board of health pull off on any proposed barn stable permit regulations. They are recommending because we're, what happened was we had to change in ALMO inspectors and realized, and the board of health realized that the job of doing the barns, of inspecting the barns, really had not been done as much as it should be, as well as it should be. And obviously, if you're gonna spend more time on that, there's a cost in doing that. We have a minimal salary right now for the ALMO inspector, I think it's in the hundreds of dollars a year right now. So what they had proposed was a series of regulations and fees for, in fact, the inspection of barns and stables. Those have not been approved yet, they're on, in draft form, I've given you each a copy of those.
That's what we picked up, what was on the desk?
It's in your.
It's in my read folder or is it something new?
It's in your, it's in that green, behind the green.
Yeah, you took it up the weekend, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So that's.
So it's part, one is that they've asked.
Part one.
The board of health to not enact any of those regulations until the town meeting then has a chance to vote on two proposed bylaw amendments that they've brought in ten signature petition articles. One is to establish an agricultural commission to represent the Halifax farming community, and then the second is a right to farm bylaw, which would, um, increase, I guess, the rights in a sense of agricultural uses here in Halifax. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail about because, um, we'd spend a lot more time here. I'm, the only thing I'll point out is I'm glad they did not use the model bylaw that was proposed at the state level, because that included a notice for many seller to any buyer of property in Halifax. Hi, people farm in Halifax, get used to it. Um, I'd be, I'm not really dating facetious, that was basically what the notice, and if the seller did not give the buyer that notice, there'd be a $300 penalty imposed by the town.
Oh, wow.
So I'm glad they didn't include that.
East Bridgewater has, has that, and I've seen their signs on there, is that the state model?
I don't know whether they use the state model or not, I know, or I saw, I saw the bylaw at the state level, that's a model bylaw, and I included that section in it, I don't know if East Bridgewater did include it or not.
I mean, to, to me, I mean, the right to farm, just by the words, right to farm, you have a right to farm.
Well, yeah, I mean, nine percent of the towns agricultural residents are able to begin with, so.
So.
I think they're.
What's just a layman term, what's the?
I don't, I really don't know, because I think they're using a hammer for the wrong nail.
No.
Um, because, because the problem is that I think they're reacting to the proposal. The thing is that in many cases, the barns or stables that have horses, people are not agriculturally raising those horses, they simply have horses as pets, no more than you have a dog or a cat. Um, so that's one of the reasons why I'm going to suggest, the board doesn't have to do this tonight, but sometime between now and the town meeting, that we have the public hearing, whether it's a special night or as part of one of the board's selectmen's meetings, because I think as much as there'll be a full discussion at town meeting, if everybody gets in there and that's where the discussion starts, I think we're going to have a lot of, well, I didn't know it meant that, or I didn't know this, or I didn't know that, or, and.
Same here.
Yeah, so.
I would suggest that we do it at a different evening than a slot meeting, because I think you have the potential of it being at least an hour. And I also think depending on what happens during the budget season, that we're, we may be wanting to do forums on, you know, tax bills going up.
Well, there's already, one, we've already talked about, two, three, just to kind of core, adding this one in.
Yeah.
We'll just try to catch up on ourselves.
Okay, yeah. Cause then you're only seeing this now.
We'll revisit this again.
On the 10th, but maybe, you know, maybe on the 10th, you can pick a date, maybe sometime in April for, doing some of those lines.
Perfect.
But yes, so that's part two. Now, we have a petition for right to farm, we don't have one for stables?
No, the stables is board of health regulations.
Okay.
And that won't go to town meeting, that's purely board of health, if they decide to enact it, they do. What you do have are two bylaws, one to establish an agricultural commission, and the second is a right to farm bylaw.
Okay, that's, these are the two, that's one, that's two. All right, thank you.
Um, you do have a note from the chief about his fire department budgeting that would be board, with the finance committee last night, there's very little give, we, you know, the board obviously had, and, met with the finance committee about this, was it last, two weeks ago, and had come out, you know, asking the departments to please resubmit budgets to really try and cut out anything they could, and really, there's very little, so I think you were there, Ken, there's very little that it can't cut out, it's basically minimum staffing, minimum levels of equipment and such that.
And minimum training. A lot of the training is mandatory.
So, and that's what his narrative is in his letter to the board.
Yeah, I'll take a read at it.
Well, here's an extra copy, in fact, two copies sitting, so, yeah, I'm not asking you to read it now.
No, actually, I, I do have that one.
Okay.
Um, right there, right?
I believe so, yes.
No, but, so there was nothing?
I'm not saying that, I don't think it was anything, anything, very little.
No, nothing.
Okay. Um, he did provide board with some information about the request made for the town for expenses related to Blizzard Juneau, that amounted, the total for the town was about $56,000 that we spent between all the department efforts and materials. We're still waiting to see whether the feds give emergency declaration for this, and so would, we'd be eligible for funding, of course, other political issues down south are having their effect on whether, even if they said yes, whether we would, when we would get that money, so.
When you say Juneau, I mean, only one or two places name these storms, is this the first snowstorm?
This was the Blizzard of, of Juneau.
The fir, the first of the four that we've had.
Yeah.
The other story, the other.
Cause there only some places actually named storm, you know, some.
Well, there was an official, well, there was an official storm name that the feds are using.
That the feds used, because I never heard of it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've been watching a lot of forecasts lately.
Okay. I think each of the other storms that we've had during the intervening weeks also had names, even though they weren't commonly used, they had storm names, nevertheless.
Yes, I'm a swear words.
Yes. Um, let's see, BMI Broadcast Music sent another letter asking for money, I'm gonna put this into the folder for town meeting, not to say it has to be at the town meeting, but eventually, sometime next month, you'll have to make a decision whether you want to or not go in or not.
Did finance committee have staff talking?
No, because I haven't submitted anything to them yet.
No, I mean, I, cause that's what I thought we had.
I can certainly.
We would like to have them take a look at it.
I will make sure to put it on the agenda, oh, in fact, I'll see them tomorrow night, so I'll talk to them tomorrow night and.
Okay. Wednesday.
Yes, but they're trying to hold meetings because, well, the snowstorms, they haven't let people hold meetings.
Yeah, cause that's something that, you know, I mean, if they're asking for money and it goes that far, then they're gonna need to know about it. Just get some feedback.
Yeah, speaking of, speaking of money, and the finance committee, the finance committee does have a town bank form in from a person named Linda Braga over at 175 River Street. Normally, we go through the process, the finance committee would see her, I don't know if they're gonna see her tomorrow or next week, then if they were okay, then they'd send it to the, to you all, and we'd have a joint meeting and all that. The thing is that they're right now, have six people on the committee, one of whom is not coming to any of the meetings, the second person's seriously ill, so they're really down to four working members right now. There's one actual vacancy that this person would fill right now. Um, that means that if any of the four can't come on a particular night, they don't have the forum, so they're trying to get this filled as quickly as possible. I didn't know whether it was practical for the board to come in next Monday to meet, uh, come in, still be a meeting for the board, but to be there for the finance committee meeting when they do the interview with Ms. Braga, and then if people are ready to go, but we may not even have forum on Mondays.
No, I just need to tell you that I, I got a copy of the agenda for tomorrow night, and Ms. Braga is attending the meeting tomorrow night. I can't, I, I was gonna go to the.
We can't post anyways, so.
Yeah, it would be too late for us to go.
Right, I told them that.
Yeah. So I was surprised that it was on there, so maybe, maybe I'll send.
Can post Monday.
I could try.
And just have them tell us what, the time is she's coming in to do this, or where we can come in.
I'll send Gordon.
Usually you're.
Yeah, I'm here on Monday, so.
But for me or Troy to come in.
Okay, let's see what we can do for Monday.
You know what I'll do, I'll send, well, we'll chit chat, and I'll send Kendra Kelly a text of Gordon.
Okay.
Okay.
About?
About if they can reschedule the candidate for Monday, so she doesn't have to come in twice.
Well, it doesn't hurt for her not to come in, because if you're voting her in, she needs to be there and get a handle on it anyways.
Yes.
So I, I would.
Oh, okay, all right, just leave it, okay.
Yeah, get her up to speed earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, but I can tell them tomorrow night, look, if you can come in back on Monday, we can set with selectmen, and also I'll call John Bruno up and see if he can come in.
Right now, she's not voting, but she might be up that much closer to up to speed.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, code of conduct for, we've already done the water department incentive increase, code of conduct for visitors, I would wait off until Troy's here to do anything with that. But I'm also waiting till March 14th anyway, since the board's seen this for the first time, we'll discuss it in a month.
The employee code of conduct.
I'm getting, working on that, that's the visitors' code of conduct, I'm working on the employee one right now.
Cause, yeah, all you had was, I thought we already had the town employee code of conduct.
No, I don't have one for that yet.
Which one we have in there?
You have the visitors. Um, fire department, just so you know, one of the two ambulances was struck by another vehicle up in Brockton, um, that vehicle hit our vehicle, wasn't vice versa, so we're not at fault. Uh, there was some tire damage and a little bit of bodywork that needs to be done, the tire was already fixed, and they'll gain the estimate for the bodywork, and the justice either been out there or will be out there this week.
Is it decommissioned or is it?
No, it's still running. The body, the tire needed to be repaired for it to run, but the bodywork was not so severe that it couldn't be used.
It's working, they had, they had three second medicals today.
Was that A1 or A2? I don't know, the nor, the.
I think it's A2.
Yeah, I think it's the older.
The older?
Yeah.
Um, Amantis Estates, which is the six duplexes off of Elm Street, we have an environmental notification form, there's no action for the board to take, but we get that as a matter of course. Um, let's see, Bristol, regional coalitions for suicide prevention, they're having their annual legislative breakfast on March 27th, so I have information about that, probably from the board months ago, that's in Taunton, in the morning, since it's breakfast. We have a note from, um, let's see, Warren, I think it's.
Walter Grover.
Yeah, and Barbara Gifford of 26 White Island Road, they're thanking the highway department for all the work they did on White Island Road during the recent storms. Um, it came to the board, I don't know whether the highway department got a similar note, but I can pass this along to them.
Yeah, sure. I never got one when I did White Island Road, just ain't fair. I'm glad some, somebody's shown appreciation.
Well, I think after.
They've had a tough winter.
I think after the first storm, people were criticizing a lot of highway departments right and left, not just here, and I think what's happened is over the intervening weeks, people have understood what the job is like and what they're having to do, and there's a lot more appreciation there, out there now for the work they're doing.
I know, they're all, they're like out of salt, out of any road treat, and I know they're just getting one truckload in a, next in a while, but they've only been doing the main roads, um, the side roads, forget it. And I'm telling you, there's gonna be a lot of potholes.
Yes, well, they're already there.
Come spring, I mean, the roads are gonna, even the new holds get frosty, now you're driving on down D106, down by the old avenues.
Um, you have a resignation letter from Larry L. Robinson, from the board of registers, you can send a, send a letter thanking for service.
Second, any further discussion? All those want to thank him for his service, he's moving up, he should, should have moved the flag about to go.
Well, I don't know when he moved.
Or all of us should have moved the flag or about to go, but thank him for his service. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, just, we already did the chapter 40B state financial assistance, Halifax Golden Silver Coin Shop, Mr. Chiaromonte had a request and received a copy of the notes being used to prepare the minutes. He had, a couple of weeks ago after the meeting, asked for a copy of the minutes, and I told him verbally, it's, it was right there at the time, that we'd give him a copy of the minutes once they were done. Um, he wasn't satisfied with that last week, and instead he wanted, you know, a written notice of my response, so I provided that. I, I agree, it's in law that I'm supposed to give a red notice, but if someone's right there in the room, usually it's pretty sufficient for me to tell them right there and then, this, you know, we'll give you a copy, but that was enough, and then he wanted a copy of the notes, and we made a copy of the notes, so.
But he wasn't requesting it that night at the meeting?
No, no.
This was after?
Couple of days after the meeting, he requested the minutes, and then last week he requested a copy of the notes, and all that's, so that's where things stand.
Had those minutes been done?
Not yet, I know the PM is still working on them.
Okay, was that the one that we didn't record?
Correct, we didn't have cable.
We didn't have cable?
Correct.
That was the night we had to start a day late, was that the Wednesday?
I believe so, yes, yes, it was, yeah.
Because we had to cancel Tuesdays because of that snowstorm.
Correct, yeah. Um, just so the board is aware, on Silver Lake Regional School District, the town of Plinton had voted no on the fiscal 15 amended budget along, obviously, we did that last week also, so that was two no votes, so the budget was defeated. It's now going back to the Silver Lake Regional School District, they're meeting Thursday, there are two meetings of interest to the board, one is, there was a particular invitation from the Silver Lake Regional School District's Revenue Committee, which is going to be talking about all the money that's available from the Pembroke settlement, whatever costs, like legal bills and such related to that, they're gonna review the Massachusetts general laws, I assume the state, um, school regulations on having a surplus of money, they're gonna be talking with any selectmen, or they're about that, they're gonna review the capital improvement plan, and then they're gonna set another meeting day, I don't know, but, um, I don't know where they're gonna be going, I, in terms of that, and the next meeting, which is the six o'clock, this one's at five, the, the big committee is reviewing the open meeting law complaint to do with the school committee vote back on January 8th, they're getting a report from that five o'clock meeting, they're gonna talk about technology discussion as part of fiscal 16 budget, they're going back and talking about the fiscal 15 budget, so they may very well, by the end of that night, do two things. One is, they may come back and send amended 15 budget with the same capital plan, I'm not saying they will, just, that's a, hypothetically, that's one scenario, they might come back with a revised one, they might just hold off on doing anything and wait until they can coordinate with our special town meetings later this spring, or add it to the fiscal 16 budget, so it's tied into our meetings for the annual.
Right, I, I plan on attending that meeting, and I just, um, you know, I've talked to the chair of the Silver Lake School Committee, and I've talked to a couple of the other members, and, and I think a good idea is to actually sit down and go over the actual breakdown of the Pembroke money, and I explained to both of those members that, you know, when we talk about a cap, capital plan, it's not just a list of items that need to be replaced, it needs to be sort of what we have, which is our 10-year capital plan, and every year we've identified what should be replaced, and so if we can all agree to a comprehensive capital plan, that sort of cuts down on this, no, you can't have it this year, because we all are aware of the different things that need to be funded.
Well, some areas you can't get it, because you just don't have the money.
Right, and I've explained that to them.
They're currently not in that position of really not having.
Well, I mean, you know, I've explained to them that we, you know, obviously, we have a capital plan, and at times we are unable to actually fund things that we should be funding within that particular budget year. Um, I think, we're not gonna get a lot done on Thursday, I don't believe, I think it's gonna be just the opening dialogue on the breakdown of Pembroke and, you know, the capital plan, and I've talked to a selectman from Kingston, she's on board for the same concept, and so is the chair of the finance committee from Plinton, I have conversations with her, because we're, you know, we're buil, rebuilding a relationship, and, you know, we all need to just start the work that needs to be done, and understand that the town has needs as well as the school, and we need to balance that.
There's a, they're just gonna be forming that subcommittee.
It's the first meeting.
It's the first meeting.
They already formed the subcommittee?
Yes, it's a three-person committee.
So Casey Hanson from Halifax is on it, Marco DePoli from Kingston is on it, and Maureen Springer from Plinton.
What's a three-member committee?
It's a three-member subcommittee. So, yeah.
But also, connect with all, one of the challenges from, in my reading of the three-town agreement for Silver Lake, is that they actually now have to come up with a fiscal 16 budget on Thursday, because the three-town agreement requires them to do so, minimum of 45 days before the first business meeting or the first town meeting of any of the three towns. Kingston starts April 11th, so the clock is 45 days, goes back to this coming Thursday, so they may very well vote a fiscal 16 budget, doesn't mean they can't revise it, but I think we're going to, I think legally, they're gonna be bound to give us something at that time.
Right, and Charlie was at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, when each of the finance committees from the three towns got up and sort of just gave a state of the union of each community, and we're all facing some budget challenges this year, so I think, So I think, you know, I'm hopeful that the school committee will really take that into consideration when they review their budget.
The problems for them, as are for us, is that they don't have any state aid numbers anymore than we do.
Right.
Those won't come out at the earliest until March 4th. That's when the governor's budget. Tied into that, if you remember a year and a half ago, we had the problem, luckily, really not for us, but for Plinton and Kingston, that their minimum contributions for the Silver Lake budget, and that, those numbers are tied into their actual assessments, were off by $100,000. Plinton's original assessment was $100,000 less than it should have been. Kingston's was $100,000 more. Luckily, they were able to work out an agreement to, I think, over a couple of years, move money over from one town to another. The problem was that when they voted their budget in March last, that year and a half ago, two years ago now, they voted a set of numbers with a certain set of assumptions, what those minimum contributions were. Then in July, the state changed those numbers, which meant that the assessments were off, which meant that you had that problem. They would rather, and we wouldn't rather, that they end up with the same type of situation. We might be the ones at the short end of the stick, for instance, or the other end. And it does, it's, no one's going to be happy of that. So I've, I know I've been in contact with the state office that handles these decisions and said, we need numbers now. We can't wait till July. But that's going to factor into the 16 budget also, so it's not the easiest situation for them.
March 4th, we should at least get the governor's numbers, and I'm just guessing. I think that'll be the floor.
So it does sound like it's going to be a busy meeting.
I have an MMA meeting.
And I'm sure they got a good handle on budget, what they're going to put forward. This is just the past meetings made it, bumped it around that they now have to.
Well, I think what they got was a starter set for the budget. The innocent's got the original proposal at their last time they really talked about the budget. And they, I don't know that, whether they're going to be ready to say, either A, we're required to bring the budget back to the three towns, here it is. But they're going to maybe put a big asterisk and say that, we understand this isn't what you're going to accept. We'll come in with a better budget, but given that we don't have state aid numbers, no minimum contribution numbers and such, you'll see us in a few weeks or something with a better budget.
But we never have state aid numbers in town.
Actually, usually, we have the governor's.
Well, that last, that last time was, they were late. They were really late. That's why they ran into that problem.
With the minimum contribution.
Which was, because the state aid numbers changed.
Yeah, well, they, because it was late, they normally aren't that late. And that's why it caused Pembroke, I mean, Plinton to have that problem.
I have an MMA meeting on Tuesday, Charlie, so I'll be able to get an update.
We have an 8:15 appointment with South Shore Community Action Council. I'm assuming that's, that is your, your appointment. Come on up, come on up. Introduce yourself to the camera audience.
You will. Michael, I'll be back. So have a seat.
Troy, I don't need this tonight.
Troy has his name.
Oh.
Oh.
Those are, those are just.
Those are extra.
Anybody that's interested.
These have our names on them.
Yes.
These ones do not. Well, anyways.
Those will be accessed.
Aye.
My name is Frank Casey. I'm a Capitol resident and I've been sitting on the board for South Shore for 11 years now. And this year, the board voted to visit each one of the towns that we service. There's 12 in the cluster. And we found, over the years, I have particularly been a former selectman for a good many years. The average selectman doesn't know anything about South Shore. If there's a critical case in town, more times than not, if even if they, they know exists for one reason or another, they don't call. We have 26 major funding sources. Your yearly figure of goods and services amounted to 252,000. And it was a little skewed because the vast majority of that, as you can see on the sheet, is made up by the fuel assistance and the elderly transportation costs. And what I'm going to do is, two-fold. Invite you down, we just went into a brand-new building right across the Registry of Deeds. And we have a complete lower floor dedicated to food service. And that's our food bank. And down there, we've also started a program prior to going into the new building, with Healthy Harvest. And we're passing those products off, particularly, we encourage the schools to get these young kids, elementary level, to be more involved with healthy foods, salads and so forth. We have three classrooms. We've already leased one to Massasoia community. And the idea is, they're going to, they're going to open a nursing certificate program. And for the students that attend, and they feel strong enough scholastically, they'll be able to go to Massasoia. They have a very strong program up there right now, just blossomed. And, you know, it'd be a great source for any of your students and, you know, who are looking for something. The other program, and you had one participant last year, is the CDL program, nurse's license license. This is our fourth class that we've started. First two classes, they came to us and astounding enough, first class filled in less than two hours. The average age is 47.
Wow.
These were all long-term unemployed people. And who had, a lot of them had given up. They told us that, that they didn't figure they'd ever get a job. And we moved right along, and by the third week, they recognized that they did have one problem. We had six, six members of their class that couldn't read tests enough to take the first part of the test over at the registry. So we have a good relationship with the Plymouth Library, and they, they came down and mentored those, mentored those students. And as it turned out, 38 of 40 completed the course. One, one was taken out of the course by one private company who wanted to train them to their specifications and was willing to pay their CDL. We have, we have an agreement with the Plymouth Boston Bus Line. They get as many of those applicants as we can provide. And the starting wage is $23 to $24 an hour. So it's, it's surprising when you see these people. It's, it's a serious turnaround.
Since Ralph Camden.
Yes. Showing your age, Mr. Chairman. And as you can see, this is just a brief overview of some of the things. And we're available, we have a block room system that are reserved. It's in a location that we don't dispose, and that's for particularly dated women and children. And they're able to stay in the same rooms that any of the other residents do. We provide food and drink for this day. The last thing, and this is the one that's hard. They've asked us to go to, again, to each of the 12 towns and request a $5,000 article, either as a citizen petition article or, we'd love to see the selectman take them on as an article. Kevin's sat for the last few years on the DLVC. I understand the problems you're having, you know, you're talking state aid figures and so forth. We were also impacted in a lot of that. We had to shut off the fuel assistance Thanksgiving week. We have 13,304 people that receive fuel assistance. And with the, with the numbers we were getting, that's enough, we couldn't take any more on. We're hoping that that increases and be able to take some more applications. But right now, it's stated number 13, 304, so everybody's being impacted. So I know that this comes as a surprise. I don't expect the answer tonight, but we'd love to work with you, you know, whatever it takes, and invite you down to the building, maybe get you interested in some of the programs. I mean, there's some that I don't even know, the acronyms. We've got page and a half. I had to take a test, I probably get 70, you know. But do you have any questions for me?
I'm pretty impressed of what, all the things that you do, and I bet you a lot of people don't even know that you exist.
And I didn't know about it honestly until I became a selectman and was ready to lock up the door. I couldn't get anybody to take this position, so out of a period of guilt, I somehow got involved.
You got roped right in.
I got roped in. So much for the retirement.
I didn't know they did so much.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and from time to time, well, every year, we do have a few articles that are very similar to your organization. I'm sure you're aware.
Yes.
And so, you know, we are facing a budget crisis this year, as most communities are. But you certainly have our commitment, or my commitment, to look into it, to think about it. And, you know, certainly, 5,000 may not be the number, but, you know, we will definitely take it under consideration.
We had funded this a couple, three years ago.
Yeah.
And I can't remember why it was, we hadn't been funding it.
I don't think we got a petition. Maybe we.
I don't think we've been getting petitions for a while.
You know, we have, we do South Shore Legal Services, and we also do the South Shore Women's Center article. Yeah.
All the way to this, yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe we can forward this off to the Finance Committee to see if there's any wiggle room while they're now going through all the budgets. I know it's probably tough, but we're missing a board member tonight. Maybe we can bring this discussion up again.
I know Troy well. If you could even call me at home, I would get the problem.
To me, it's worthwhile, and I don't have a problem with a recommendation.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
If you do reach a conclusion here, please call.
Yeah.
Actually, let me give you my home phone.
Sure.
Please.
You don't mind it on the camera?
Nothing. I'm too old.
You didn't do anything wrong? You're not Patricia A. Daly.
Yeah, no.
It's like, we got her cat anyway.
Yeah, you got her cat. My number is 508-866-2752.
2752?
And that's Frank Casey.
Yes.
We'd love to work with you.
K or C?
C.
Yep, no time.
Which one was?
Awesome.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thanks so much for having me.
Enlightening us on this, and we have more reading material.
Yeah.
And even if you can't come to a conclusion to fund any portion of it, you're still, you can give your call and look to show the building.
Yeah, it'd be great. Thank you so much.
So I mean, the 5,000 is, you know, is not, you know, in stone. And anything would, anything would help.
And obviously, it's not a large amount in comparison to the budget we're dealing with in the overdubbing up. But it's, we're trying to get the towns involved to know that we're there, they can follow us, they can add this, do this and that. We'd be glad to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
It's kind of a pleasure meeting you. Thank you, Mrs. Union.
A pleasure, right?
Thank you. And if you need any more of those, there shouldn't be enough.
Okay.
You can certainly call me.
Charlie, did you need one of these? All right, Pam, maybe pass it on to Finance Committee Chair?
Okay, yep.
You know what?
You're on set.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Very good.
Let them know, even though they came in and they're requesting and, I don't know. I'm sure they watch all our meetings, so they'll, they'll know all about it, right? We have an 8:30. Should we be having the 8:30 or?
Well, I know that they fired you. We've had another commitment. And I know the Highway Surveyor has a failing matter that he's dealing with, so I don't think we're going to be coming in tonight.
Nobody dispatch and?
I did not hear anything from.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, one way or the other. Wait a couple more minutes, or if we can meet with the chief and with the town accountant. Right now, I think it's going to be a five or 10-minute discussion, is my guess.
I'm waiting to get for the full selectman experience, so.
Oh.
Well, I don't know if our fight is.
Why don't we hit a few, why don't we hit a few, see where we are? How much we got here anyways? Not too bad.
Yes, super quick.
Too bad, so I reckon.
Yeah, we can make it super quick.
Okay, fiscal 14 audit, I need another form signed. This is the, actually, basically, the description of the services that the auditing firm was going to be doing for us. But I need.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we authorize the Chair to sign a letter from Lynch-Malloy-Morani P concerning the work the firm will do.
Can I second myself?
Yes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I can, I myself.
You can, aye, you can.
Uh, right here, governance.
Yes. Chapter 40B Blackledge Farm, that has come back to the Zoning Board of Appeals for another go-around. There'll be a public hearing on Monday, March 16th, I believe, at 7:00, up in the Great Hall. I think, I think they're starting meetings at 6:00 at night, so they can handle other appointments. I prefer the time it is.
I'm going to go.
You have a copy of the proposal here. I've given you copies of the letter the board asked me to send on behalf of the town back in July about the project. I'm going to bring this back up on March 10th, the selectman's meeting. So if the board wants to send the same letter, a different letter, or whatever it wants to do.
Was that one on the credential?
Well, it was.
Was that one on?
We haven't got that one.
Right now, it's in Charlie's head.
Yeah, you, you have a copy of the letter.
Oh, we have that. That was on the credential.
Well, you do, at some point now, it's in your pile.
Okay.
Are we back on?
All right.
Guess we're back. Mount Ponce Pond, I have estimates and timetables from the Sea Biologists for Water Control Technology.
Oh, yes.
Two things, we have the two projects. East Mount Ponce Pond, we're dealing with invasive weeds. I have sufficient money for that to start the project, not do the actual treatment there in East Mount Ponce Pond with the use of the sonar, but starting the permitting and permissions process. I'm probably going to need to go to the Finance Committee for a small amount from the reserve fund to carry over till May 11th. Because I don't think I have sufficient money to get me through all the steps before May 11th. I can't, I'm not going to go to them and ask for money to do the treatment because that will be in a five-figure number. But it'll be a few thousand dollars to get to that point. Then May 11th, at town meeting, I'll ask for money from the stabilization fund, not the big one.
Yes, the water one.
Water one, to get the rest of the work done for calendar year 2015.
Are we confirmed yet for the water commissioners for March 9th?
Yes and no. When we, we had the confirmation from Brian Creedon a couple of weeks ago, but in fact, emailed him earlier today to say, just wanted to get a time set so I can pass along to everybody. I haven't heard back yet.
Yeah, because we want to remind Rockton that part of the 1964 legislation is that they need to share in the expense of keeping our pond clean.
Any feedback from the innocent?
Nothing from either of them yet. I wouldn't, I mean.
It's still, it just happened, right, about two, three?
Right.
Two, three. But yeah, to chase them, you don't want to be pushing them too much, but again, you need.
I don't want to push them.
For West Mount Ponce Pond, I have sufficient money to get all the permissions and such, and actually, get the first of the three treatments that will be scheduled for this year. Again, I still will be going to town meeting for additional money, but I'll just need about $15,000 for that. The, I'll need, the total cost for East Mount Ponce Pond's about $81, and I'm going to, most of that, I'm going to have to come, go to town meeting for. But the work will be done after town meeting. For West Mount Ponce Pond, I'll just need 15 to get the rest of the work done.
Is there a treatment?
Well, for West Mount Ponce Pond, we did treatment two years ago.
Right, and we had a way.
We had a way. We're going to do three smaller treatments this year. So it'll be the second year that we've done treatments.
And the money's there.
Most of it is there for West Mount Ponce Pond. I need another $15,000 to finish the year over there. Because we have a different, we have one article that's specific to algae. We have another article that's specific to invasive weeds. And so I need, there were pots of money available to me.
You say pots and weeds in the same subject.
We're going, we're getting there, we're getting there. Yeah, we need a nonprofit facility. But I think we need to raise some.
Pull the weeds and put it in a pot.
Either that or tax it, one or the other. Because we're looking for sources of funding.
Yes. The chief will have to regulate it.
So if the board's okay with that, I just would like the board to permission to proceed on those?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Town report, we still need a report from the selectmen. I'm just wondering, we're missing pieces.
I know, I was just beat up.
Okay.
Go ahead over the head. I was wondering how much time you got.
Want to talk to the boss?
There we go.
How much time, how much time does Charlie have? No, 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 I know the time. No, I know the time. I'm asking how much time you have.
I'm going to say, March 10.
I would ask you to do it.
March 10. March 10 would allow you to get it done, and then.
No, you better have, she needs it before that.
Oh. Pageinated, that's.
So sometime, so basically, sometime during the next week, I have to draft something for your review and give it to Pam to plop it in there. You'll still have a chance for, to review it, obviously, but I have to give, she gets very upset with me if I don't give her enough time to pageinate.
No, I'm asking to.
You're writing the selectman's.
I'm asking Charlie, I know Troy had, I don't know Troy, John had asked Charlie when he had to do the report. And I asked Charlie a couple of weeks ago if he'd be, if he would be able to do it. And I'm, I'm.
Be straight out.
I'm straight out.
No, no, I, that's.
And I don't want to hold Pam up. You know, I'm not to say that next week I might find a spot.
Well, I think you'll.
I can't say that right.
You'll have enough time to review it and make, I'll make sure all three of you see it.
I totally make it as fluffy as possible.
But not too long.
No. Can I peek at it first?
That's the whole point.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, all three of you will see it. Yeah, all will get, you know, limited number.
Well, I'm saying, you know, just, yeah, if I find one little thing I might, I want to sneak in there, then would it do any good for the rest of the board to see it and then see it again?
Go Lakers.
Yeah.
No, no, I know we all look at it, but I'm saying.
Well, no, he wants to slip stuff in there. I don't know what he wants to slip in there, so go Lakers.
No, that's what I was waiting it to him. I might just forget.
All right.
Trying to squeeze out one for the traffic safety.
Okay.
Which is, should be easy, but.
Okay, special town meeting, May 15. I'd like the board to open the warrant for the special town meeting that's going to be held that Monday. Last year, the deadline for articles was March 25th. That coincided with a selectman's meeting, so I want the board to close the warrant on March 25th.
Okay, I make a motion that we open the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on May 11, 2015.
Second. Any further discussion? What does this allow us to do now, Charlie?
It's opening the warrant for the special town meeting, so people can start submitting articles. I'll send a note out to the department saying, here's your chance, but these are articles that are housekeeping-type of things. They shouldn't be, it's stuff that normally should be on the annual town meeting warrant.
It's not in stone. It's the opportunity to put this in.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that vote includes recommending the deadline of Tuesday, March 24th.
Yes. Okay, old place, I'm waiting here from the highway surveyor, Facebook presence, I'll carry that over to the next meeting when Troy's here.
He has to read, you know?
Same thing with both have trust. They don't have any reports on all those things farther down the list. Obviously, Blackledge Farm, though, we're, we did get the application and so that's starting to move ahead. Same thing with consolidating billings and waiting here from highway.
Did we have more, sorry, back up, old pet trust, was, was that going as far, all the paperwork?
You have all the paperwork to read. Once you're okay with it, then.
I'm trying to figure out which one, oh, it's the phones, the phone policy one, okay.
Yeah. We're gonna meet about collective bargaining in a minute or two, school roof. The school administration did not send in an application for this year's round of funding for work ongoing in the elementary school roof. I talked with. Pardon, they did not send anything in.
You were asking for it?
Well, it's too late to send anything in. The deadline's passed. And it isn't, unfortunately, or fortunately, or however you want, but I, we don't get to send it in. It's the school's job to send it in. The selectmen or myself would have to sign off, saying we acknowledge that, you know, it's going in and we're supportive of the project, but the application itself has to be sent in by the school.
To?
To the school building.
The school building, SBA, the school building authority.
So what is the roof, is that roof gonna hold out another year?
Well, they've done some seam work. I know there are a number of leak problems nevertheless in other parts of the building.
It's really gonna find a lot.
It's going to, unfortunately, it's going to have to.
We don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Well, we've had emergencies in the past.
Yeah, but this would be a very, very large, six-figure emergency, which we can't simply.
That roof is probably gonna cost, what do we, what do we estimate, somewhere around 300 to 500,000 to do the roof over? It's a big job.
Is it gonna become an emergency again?
Well, I know, okay, I, let me put this way. There's nothing preventing the board, if it wanted to, from holding a special town meeting at some point and getting money from the stabilization fund or borrowing or whatever. I'm not saying, I'm not recommending it.
No.
Because I think we should be getting money from the state.
Right, we have a mechanism that won't cost the taxpayers.
Well, it will.
It will cost them something, but it will cost them less if we go through the proper channels of the SBA.
You know, it'd be nice to know that, you know, yeah, we can keep this thing passed.
No, yeah, I think that they can.
Okay.
But it's just one more year.
You know, right away. Well, no, I mean.
Yeah.
Will it survive a year? I mean, can we get?
I, I, the school has made that decision for us. However, in connection with that, I'm gonna at least put in the hopper an article for design money for the roof project so that when we get into the grant cycle, we're already prepared, we're ready to go, if the state's ready to go.
You think we're gonna have to redesign it?
I think you need somebody to put together specifications and such for the work that's gonna be done there, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I mean, someone's gotta do that.
Repair or replace existing materials?
Well, I don't know what, what are the specifications for materials?
Like, maybe this is the time to do something different with parts of the roof. Yeah.
Well, I know we had to do that for the library, obviously, the roof was poorly constructed or whatever designer came up with wasn't adequate for the library. And I'm assuming that what they did for the school was, in that.
I honestly don't know, I, I don't know.
What are you talking about, money for that?
I don't know. I talked to Jerry Elliott about that. He's going to talk with the firm that gave the ballpark estimate as to the roof cost and get a number from them, again, ballpark as to what it would cost to do the design.
And we really do need to keep the school committee in the loop, that's my only reason.
Well, yeah.
They're.
It's not the same as the, as the library, though, because it's not a redesign of the roof. That was a redesign.
I don't know what's necessary and what's not.
I'm, I'm assuming that this is a wear, this is a wear and tear.
I just don't know. The thing is, since I have no information.
But does you have to have that?
I agree, but, well, they can give us a rough number as to what it's gonna cost. They, they've seen the roof before. They probably tell us, you're gonna need to redesign this portion and because of that, it's gonna cost you this much more than just a simple repair or replace that you mentioned.
And that's a guess.
Well, I'm.
Everything's a guess right now.
We've, we've had discussions about the roof before. We've brought Tom Elias in, we had a meeting with the superintendent last year and the school committee members. And, you know, there's definitely a couple of areas that, that's why we did some of the seam work.
I know, I wasn't involved in any of those meetings. Just trying to get my.
Yeah, I know, but.
Way ahead around.
Well, we could bring everybody in at some future meeting for that discussion because we're certainly not applying for the money today.
Yeah.
Did they not address it because they forgot or?
I'm, I'm just curious.
I would, I would. Game of Jingles saying.
I would talk with the school administration about that. I'm not gonna speak for them.
Right. But it'd be interesting to know where it stands, just for other.
Well.
You know, how far have you got along, gone along? Cause it just, cause it came up in the meeting and we're.
We.
I think it's a subject that's being discussed at the school committee meeting as we speak.
We already talked about the Lindy's Bag and Tax Swimming Grant, just so the boards are aware, we did get funding. We got the announcement from DEP today. I've told Board of Health and the rest of the working group, so that's good news. This is to do the feasibility study of mechanisms over at the, yeah. It does, it's not putting them in, it's saying, what would we do with that?
No, I think it's great.
And that should be more of that.
Yes.
To figure out how to do this and operate and maintain it.
Perfect.
If that works out awesome, that is a key.
The next. No, we haven't done anything, it's something, the announcement came in today.
Okay.
Is that it? We done?
And Pam, do we have any outstanding permits and such?
No, I don't. They supposed, well, Mike signed in that form from there.
Yeah. They did.
The very beginning. I want me to do it again, I'll make a motion.
They did it 7:35.
Yeah, that was the very first thing we.
Yeah, I know you signed it, but.
Damn, yeah, I was, I, if you want to put it in the minutes right now, I would vouch for it. The only other thing, in terms of the gardens over here, the beautification committee had a meeting today. And a member just want confirmation that the board was approving, not of a particular plan, but that they would want the beautification committee to come in at a future date to present a set of plans for the board to approve for gardens over here in the lawn.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, do you need a motion to adjourn?
No, because we're going into executive session.
We're, we're leaving.
That's right. Do not to come back and to come.
For any, any statements or?
We're not gonna go into, we're, we're not going back into open session, there'll be no statements at the end. We're, we're going into executive session because having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the interests of the town.
Exactly what Charlie said.
We are discussing the following contracts, highway dispatchers, sergeants, patrol officers, and firefighters.
Exactly what Charlie said.
So I have a motion?
Yes, that's Charlie.
A second? Nice second.
Okay.
Vote aye?
Yes.
Yes? And that's it? We're out of the fix, thank you all for joining us.
Charlie's gonna be home before midnight.
And, yeah.
And I guess it.